Good evening, this is a meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals taking place March 19th at Town Hall. Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with ACBA law. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, in-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions, tuning to Comcast Channel 6 or Verizon Channel 28, or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in the hearing but not attend the meeting in person, please email your questions, comments prior to or during the meeting to jbattersby@northandoverma.gov. That's J. Battersby, B.A.T.T.E.R.S.B.Y., at northandoverma.gov. Question and comment will be read during the proceedings and responded to accordingly. Now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And can I have a motion for the acceptance of the minutes for February 13th?
For moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And we have a new public hearing for 115 Winter Street. Do you want to read the legal notice?
Sure. Notice is hereby given that the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the North Andover Town Hall at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024, at 7:30 PM to all parties interested in the petition of Adrian and Adam Ramos for the property at 115 Winter Street. MAP 103.0, Parso 0119, North Andover, Mass. 01845, in the R1 zoning district. The applicants are requesting a variance pursuant to the Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, Section 195-4.19(c)(2(c), Watershed Protection District, for construction of a new permanent structure only after a variance has been granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals in the R1 zoning district and Watershed Protection District. Specifically, the applicants request a variance in order to install an in-ground swimming pool within the 150-foot non-disturbance zone within the Watershed Protection District. Application and supporting materials are available for review at the office of the zoning department located at 120 Main Street, North Andover, Mass. on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, and Friday from the hours of 8:00 AM to 11:30 AM. By order of the Board of Appeals, Alexandria A. Jacobs, Esquire, Chair.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
If you could just give us your name and then you can tell us what's going on.
Yes, Thor Acrely, from Williamson Sprages, we're a civil engineering firm in Middleton. I think it might be, it's certainly my first time in front of you all, so it's nice to meet you. We work with the Conservation Commission and Planning Board more frequently, but we're very familiar with North Andover. With me tonight is Adrian Ramos. She is the property owner of 115 Winter Street in North Andover. Her family has resided there for the past three or four years now. And as you can see, this is a single-family house lot that was created in the late 1990s. The house was built in the 2000s, very early 2000s or 2000s. This was formerly the Messina property. They had subdivided the land into three parcels. That process is summarized in the cover letter to you all. And at this point, as you summarized, we have been before the planning board, first public hearing for the Watershed Special Permit, but for any permanent structure within the 150-foot non-disturbance zone requires a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I can kind of walk through some of the plan, I suppose. I have a full copy of the plan here as well, if it'd be easier to look at that. I know you all have a reduced-size copy in your packets, but to go over the actual work that's being proposed, there's an 18 by 36-foot in-ground swimming pool, proposed to be bordered by a concrete patio directly adjacent to the pool. The backyard area where the pool is proposed is currently entirely lawn at this point, so no work is proposed within vegetated buffer or areas on the property where trees would need to be taken down. The area is proposed to be fenced in with an enclosed self-latch-in gate as per building code. And aside from that, the pool is equipped with a few protective measures for the wetlands and water resource areas. It would have a non-backwash filter attached to it, meaning that for regular cleaning of the pool, water isn't discharged out onto the ground. It has a filter inside of the pool itself that cleans, and then the filter is changed every so often. That process is outlined in the operations and maintenance plan you have there. There's also a stone infiltration trench along the edge of the patio to help capture and attenuate stormwater from the addition of the patio area. We do have some measures for the dechlorination of water before discharging it into the stone infiltration trench that are outlined in the plan as well. And, you know, the other concern obviously is during construction, you know, there's always the chance that you get erosion or you're digging out a big hole, erosion from stockpiles or spoils. So we have a silt fence and mulch sock around the perimeter of the worksite. The construction entrance is proposed to have construction matting on it along the side of the driveway, or off the end of the driveway, rather, to the pool area. So we feel that the area will be well protected during construction, and as long as the operations and maintenance plan is adhered to, after the pool is installed, the risk for the wetland resource areas and public water supplies is pretty minimal, in our opinion. Chlorine in particular, volatilizes very quickly, does dissipate in one to six days typically. But, you know, regular maintenance and keeping everything in order should ensure the pool is functioning correctly and protecting the environment. As part of the Watershed Special Permit process, that this plan and the operations and maintenance plan that you saw is reviewed by a second engineering firm, Horsley &amp; Witten, and they provided a few comments which we addressed, and just today we got their response letter with their approval. The plan you're looking at was only updated to show an additional silt fence along the erosion control line, so the limit of work didn't change at all. And then that construction matting that I mentioned was added to the construction entrance. And that was the primary changes as part of their review. We did include an operations and maintenance manual for the specific filter system for the pool for Adrian and her family to follow while the pool is in operation. But aside from that, I think that covers most of the project, and I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns.
Just out of curiosity, so you've referenced chlorine a few times. In today's environment, some people put in salt pools. I'm just curious, you selected chlorine versus the salt? And kind of what drove the decision? It seems like salt has become more of the new way.
So it actually is a saltwater system, but it does still require a certain amount of chlorine. I don't know the specifics, but it is a saltwater-based system.
Okay.
So you have a pretty detailed maintenance plan. What if you sell the house? I mean, the pools last for a while. How does that get communicated to new owners?
So I know as part of the Watershed Special Permit, the O&amp;M document and the materials get included and recorded on the property deed, but you're right. I don't know if there's a provision in their permit that states that, you know, the current property owner has to inform the future property owner of that. I know sometimes for order of conditions that'll happen, and in reality doesn't always happen, so it's kind of on the responsibility of, you know, a title attorney who's doing, you know, the sale or a realtor. But certainly there are a lot of protections in place with that recording on the property deed, so that should get caught, as well as the ZVA variance, which I understand also is recorded on the property.
And it's pretty extensive maintenance involving, like even after heavy rain events, which in this last year we've had a lot. You'd have to check the trench and make sure everything is working right, possibly repairing it frequently. Is there, like, a company, a pool company that you're expecting to employ, or is it mainly going to be household managing that maintenance program?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't made it, quite frankly, we didn't want to put the cart before the horse, so we haven't entered into a contract with any particular company. But the way these systems work, they're pretty self-explanatory, and in addition to my husband and I both living in the home, my father-in-law, who's retired, lives in the home and is very excited about the possibility of this, and has said very clearly he's happy to help. So certainly if it's something that comes beyond our ability to manage, then we will be sure that that happens. But, you know, making sure that we're following these are important to me, just because I am very sensitive and understanding of the needs of our area, the watershed area and the wetlands that are, you know, somewhat close. I would be a hypocrite if I stood up here and didn't say that I wanted to be sure that all of those were, you know, followed properly.
Awesome. You said that there was a dechlorination system before it gets pumped into the trench, because that was one of the things that I was concerned about. Is that automated? How does that work?
No, so I guess the first thing is that if they ever needed to repair the pool as part of the O&amp;M, they'd have to have a company pump out the water.
Right. For the overflow.
For a stormwater event, the chlorine would need to sit in the pool without adding any chlorine for a period of time before discharging that excess water into the infiltration trench.
Yeah. How does that system work?
So it's just pumping it to the trench. It's just a pump that would go directly to the trench.
Right. So, I mean...
So it would sit for 10 days or so and...
The pool would sit?
Yeah. You'd have some evaporation going on naturally as well, but the chlorine after, I mean, it really is six days, but they asked for 10 days for no chlorine to be added after a storm event, where you would need to de-water some of the pool water into that trench.
Right. Yeah, I'm not as familiar with pool construction, so is that de-watering, is that something that needs to be manually done, or is that something that the pool filter does or pump does?
Suppose you could probably install a system, but, you know, like, my mom has a pool, but you'd put like a little pump in the water and, you know, you'd plug it in and it just...
Lower the level.
With a hose, yeah. You lower it a few inches, you know, whatever you need to do after a storm event.
Gotcha, and you just have to make sure that you wait 10 days before doing that?
Right. Correct.
Gotcha.
During that six-day period or 10-day period, can the pool be used still? It just can't be de-watered?
Absolutely. The concern is just discharging chlorinated water into the, where it could get directly into the groundwater supply before the chlorine's been removed from the water. That's all.
So having it sit, the chlorine evaporates in that 10 days?
Yes. It breaks down, it breaks down quite quickly. Like, I know PBD Conservation Commission typically requires six days for that to happen before you can discharge it into your lawn, so 10 days is definitely conservative, but very safe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if there weren't this trench system, how would the water, I mean, how does it normally work without this kind of trenching system? Does the water just sort of, you know, emit out from the filtration system into the ground, or how does it normally function?
So on day-to-day operations, the pump system, you know, where water and chemicals circulate through the pool water, is completely a closed loop. So that's the benefit of using the non-backwash filters, whereas if you're typically cleaning your pool, you'd have to discharge water during that process. But the idea of using the trench is to help with stormwater from the patio and to also have a place to discharge that excess water from just the pool, should you need to, following a storm event. Sometimes I've seen dry wells used for that as well.
Because part of it is mitigating the impervious surface that's added.
Correct.
Okay. Would you say you stood with the planning board and conservation?
So no CONCOM jurisdiction here, but we have opened the first hearing with the planning board. They wanted to hold off until we got that peer review response, which we got today, and to let you open the hearing here as well.
Correct.
So we'll be back in front of them on April 2nd, hoping for their approval.
Did you say there's no going for the conservation board?
Correct.
Where's that?
So it's, for CONCOM, it's just 100 feet from the wetlands is their jurisdiction, but the planning or the zoning bylaw extends pretty significantly from wetlands in the Watershed Protection District. I don't know how many of these you typically get, but they have, I believe it's 100-foot non-disturbance zone if you're, if the lot was created before the enactment of the Watershed Special Permit procedure, and then for their case, the lot was created after that, so it's 150 feet from wetlands. In this case, we're between that 100-foot and 150-foot buffer where we trigger your review, but not conservation's, because we're outside of 100.
And if you look at it, it's actually, you know, just a small portion of where the pool is that comes into the 150. And we spent a lot of time looking at other spots in the lot to see if there was a place that wouldn't need the variance, and quite frankly, the only other place where we could fit a pool that didn't go into the 150 was at the end of the driveway, and for safety purposes, I felt like that was not advisable. I mean, frankly, a concern for vehicles going into the pool, but also it would be open so that anyone driving by could see the pool, which I think is just, you know, not safe. And, you know, we do have teenagers and other kids in the neighborhood, and I wouldn't want to be out of town and, you know, that people can just see the pool. So we did, really, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out the best placement for the pool that would be the least disruptive. And, you know, initially, we actually had it much closer to the porch structure, and then speaking with the pool construction expert and Thor, we felt that that was a little bit too close and somewhat unsafe as well, because we didn't want people coming down the stairs and tripping into the pool. So that sort of pushed us, again, back a little bit further into this, into this 150 buffer. So really kind of weighing all of the options was where we ended up with, where it currently is now. It's an area that's clear, that's flat, that's not seen from the street, that is further away, so that, you know, there's not a likelihood of kids tripping and falling, or adults tripping and falling into the pool.
So you said it doesn't impinge much on the zone. If I look at this, I'm reading this correctly, the line for 150 feet kind of bisects the pool.
It does.
So it looks like if I can do some really bad math on this thing, the 150-foot zone is now going to be about 134 feet?
Right.
Okay.
And the, so a WDK, which I'm assuming is wooden deck with roof, is that what that is? That's existing?
Yes, that's an existing, yeah, porch, deck with a porch enclosure. Park porch enclosure.
Do you have a copy of the guidance that you had received, that planning had been waiting for?
Oh, their letter?
Yeah.
Yes, I do.
You know, one of my biggest questions is always, how many times have you reworked to try and put something in a different spot or change the size?
And so we did a lot of that sort of in the, I mean, we've been working together for over a year. We've done a lot of that sort of in the lead-up to it, and you'll see, it's, it actually, I believe it's 18 by 38 now, and part of that is because I have a child who's a competitive swimmer, and she wanted to have more length for laps, but also so that we had enough depth in the deep end, because we do have children who want to jump into the pool, so we wanted to be able to make sure that it was deep enough to do that safely. So we did, I mean, we looked at configuring it, you know, and shaping it differently to kind of come up with where, and quite frankly, again, have tweaked it a bit in the last, you know, leading up to this, after having people walk the property with us. We didn't want to, we didn't want to come to you until we sort of felt like we were in the best position to move forward.
And putting it on the non-driveway side of the house, is the concern still exposure to the street? What's the concern with that?
The non-driveway side is further into the 150? I'm not sure what you mean, well, I'm not sure what you mean when you say non-driveway side.
Yeah, so like, if you're looking at the front of the house on the left side?
So that is, that is a hill?
This is the 150.
Ah, okay.
So I didn't, I think...
Not good construction. Yeah, I don't have terrain on the map.
And the wetlands do sneak up in here a bit, so the 150-foot really extends straight across here.
And there's also...
Yeah, I'm more like, the reglet alongside the house, yeah.
So, yeah, that's a large hill, and this is already, it's a garden bed with many lilacs and other trees that were likely planted at the time the house was built, 20-plus years ago, that I would hate to disrupt, and then a raised garden, a raised garden bed. So all, it would be actually removing more vegetation to put it there and would have to even it out, because again, it's a steep hill, versus the area where it is now is just, is just grass.
And it's relatively level.
And it is level, yeah.
Gotcha.
So I just drove by today to quick look. It seems like the topography is sloping, I guess, more in this direction than in this direction. Is that, is that, I don't know...
I would say it's probably a little steeper on the side you referenced, but definitely everything slopes.
So it slopes in that direction and in the back as well? Okay. It just, it seems like any runoff or whatnot would actually be flowing in the way, in the direction that is more than 150 feet from the wetlands.
Yes.
So that's a little added protection, I would think. I know you're closer to the wetlands from here than from over here, but if that's not the direction of the runoff, then it's less of a concern, I would think.
Right. Well, what is the topography, like, directly behind the pool? Does that slope downwards or...
Yeah, so it really, any water in here, I guess it is, this is all elevation 100, so from this, I guess we can call this the high point, the elevation 100. It does break away this way quite a bit. Looking at this, it does appear to have somewhat of a natural flow path down in this direction, but certainly from here, you know, you would get some water going back in that way, but you do have a pretty flat area up on top here where...
And there's also this raised garden area here, so what we see naturally when it does storm is the water does actually kind of run towards the driveway and up that way. It doesn't really, it doesn't really get as saturated there. So for example, just today, when I was out with the dogs, this sort of area here was where it's more saturated, and back behind where the pool would be was drier. And I don't know if that's scientific, but that's...
The finished grade of the patio is actually proposed at 99.8, 99.9, and up in this area behind the pool is slightly higher, very slightly. So it is probably correct that the runoff would flow in this direction largely.
Right. Which is a further distance from, it just seems like a little added protection.
Yeah, and again, that was, we're meeting with patio, you know, kind of everybody involved to kind of look at best-case scenario here.
What's the worst-case scenario?
No pool. And you can tell my kids.
Or a broken pool. It's just putting chlorinated water right around.
I had a pool once, as far as I remember, that was the worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you ask certain members of my extended family, they would agree. They think we're a little crazy, but...
How long ago did you buy the house?
So we moved in in 2020 and purchased it outright in, or purchased it from a family member in 2022. So we've been there three and a half years.
Were you aware of this situation when you purchased this?
We were, we were aware. Yep. But finding a home during the pandemic that would fit us and my father-in-law and have a space for him, you know, we weighed our options and decided this was the best course. And quite frankly, you know, we talked back and forth for a while before we decided whether we wanted to bite the bullet and put the funds cost forward to kind of do all of this, because it's not an endeavor for the light of, you know, for the faint of heart.
So I've been on Winter Street many times, but never on Bradford. I always go to the left.
Right, I know.
It was interesting going, oh my gosh!
I know, people forget it exists.
So I, so you've got a nice area, it's a beautiful park, I think, to live in.
Thank you.
Very spacious, you've got some acreage there, it's very nice.
Thank you.
So I was impressed, I'm going, wow. I just didn't even know it existed.
I know. And now Winter's a long street, so I always tell people, I'm on the dead-end side, and they say, where's the dead end?
I grew up in the corner of Winter and South Bradford.
Oh, right.
In elementary schools, and that was all just a field down there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we were just talking with one of the neighbors who's been there since 1972, and he said it was interesting to watch, you know, the rest of the street be developed.
Yeah.
What's the maintenance required on the trench system?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Is it something that we're talking, needs to be maintained every, you know, cleaning or something, inspected every year? If not, then we're dealing with catastrophe and...
Right. So I think in the O&amp;M, it says it should be inspected after every half-inch storm. That's pretty standard. You know, you're really not going to be getting much sediment in there from the patio, but certainly, you know, you do inspect the trench for sediment, and over time it can clog, and at that point, you know, they would hire a contractor to redo the trench.
So the, you talked about the dimensions, 38 by 18, and then the depth, you wanted depth, so I'm going to guess this is like a 50,000-gallon pool?
Oh, I don't know.
Huh?
I don't know the gallons. I don't know.
I mean, we can calculate it if you want.
Yeah, I don't know.
What's the deep end?
Eight.
I bet it's even more than 50,000.
Eight, seven.
So the deep end is eight, and the shallow end is three or four?
Three, well, with a sun deck, so there's an area where there's...
So average six.
So how are you going to fill it?
Oh, we're going to pay to, how are we going to fill it? Is that what you asked?
Are you going to have a, are you going to fill it yourself? Are you going to have a truck come in?
Oh, no, no, we'll have a, we'll have a truck come in.
Okay.
Yeah, I actually thought that that was part of what...
It is, actually. It's listed in here that a truck has to fill and empty it if it needs to be emptied.
Yep.
And take all the water off-site.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
And, yeah, so the maintenance on the infiltration trench says to inspect every six months, and after every major storm of a half-inch in a 24-hour period, remove accumulated sediment, trash, debris, leaves, and grass clippings, remove tree seedlings before they become firmly established, inspect the trench 24 hours or several days after a rain event to look for ponded water, and if there is ponded water on the surface, to check the trench to see if it's clogged, and then if it is clogged, all this stuff to basically rehabilitate the trench if it's, if it is clogged. I've put in a lot of gravel in my time, and I will say, it does get clogged quite a lot, and not just with like, you know, silty sediment, with like grass clippings and things like that. So that's part of why I asked about the sort of maintenance part of things, is it's not an insubstantial maintenance request to be like frequently noticing whether there's ponding of water, checking it twice a year, things like that.
We currently have a company that comes in and does our weekly yard maintenance and yearly, so we've already discussed with them adding, you know, this area. So, you know, I don't pretend to be an expert in things that I'm not an expert in, so certainly understand that this is, this is a, this is not a financial undertaking for just now, it's a financial undertaking for the life of the pool, including those additional requirements. I mean, again, that's part of why we took some time to make this decision of whether we wanted to go forward with it. And as far as, you know, what happens when the home is sold, all I can tell you is that it's not a home I have any intention of selling anytime soon. Certainly, life happens, and I can't make any promises, but I, we spent a long time finding the home that was right for us. My father-in-law is young and spry and loves living with us, and my children have told me that when, you know, they are older in the future, that will move into the in-law apartment and they'll buy the, live in the big house. So, you know, this is sort of our forever home, if you will. Again, I can't tell you what...
They're sweet young girls and things like that.
Close, close, close. And to which I said, I hope that's not the case. But, I mean, look, I can't tell you what's going to happen, but I'll tell you I have no intention of leaving for anytime soon, and if anyone knows what I do, I have to be at North Andover or other parts of, you know, other parts of the area to stay as an elected official, and I'm not looking to get out of that role. So I intend to stay and be in that home for a long time. So, again, I can't make any promises, but certainly being clear with any potential buyer about that, you know, where it is in the deed. I understand that obligation.
What do you have to do to winterize it? Do you have to partially drain it to winterize it?
Typically, yes.
Below the jets?
Yeah. And flush. So you have a company cub and haul that water away too?
Yeah. And if this, these coming summers or anything like the last two summers, I mean, I...
You're in trouble.
I'll have people out there frequently, but so be it.
Here comes one of my problems. Here comes one of my problems. I hate to be the problem person. I fully appreciate, and I, I believe this being your forever home, I believe your, your kids moving you into the in-law. I live with my father in my childhood home. So I can understand that and I, I say that could be true. I also understand if you're going to do something, doing it to fit your family. So I understand you mentioned something about having a daughter who wants the, the length due to the lapse. And I sit here and say, if you were in a location that gave you unfeathered ability to do whatever you want, I'd say, go for it. Do your 38 by 18. But where you're not and you're going into an area that's restricted, I sit here and go, I'm not sure where the give and take is.
So we looked at different sizes. We looked at smaller sizes and we still ended up in a, in a similar amount of, of impingement into the 150.
And I, I appreciate, because I'm sitting here and I, as much as I think a car driving through the driveway through a fence and into a pool is probably unlikely, I'm not going to sit here and say that a New England winter slip and slide wouldn't necessarily be a possibility. So I understand wanting to keep it, you know, not in front of the driveway, but I do look at it and go, why can't you push it over? I mean, if people know you have a pool, they know you have a pool. So the idea of making it a nuisance in the sense of people seeing it going, ooh, I want to jump in.
But a lot of people come down our street not knowing we, quite frankly, it's a dead end. So you would think that wouldn't be a problem. You would be surprised how many cars a day come down and turn around in my driveway. Because at one point and on some maps, it looks like our road connects all the way to Great Pond. So I, I would say probably five to six cars a day come down and turn around in our driveway, whether we're home or not. So I would not be surprised to see people who don't know that, that we have a pool, that we have a pool. Our neighbor, our house, our neighbor's car was stolen recently and somebody came right up my driveway and was looking around. So I, I do think it is a safety concern. And, and, and I talked about this again with our pool contractor and he has had a case where a pool, a car, not in the winter, actually just acts a teenager, thought that they were accelerating, their car was parked backwards, thought they were accelerating, but the car was in reverse and reversed right into the pool, through the fence into the pool.
Well, and that's why I say, I understand not wanting to put the pool right in front of the driveway.
Yeah.
But it still looks like you have a lot of distance from the end of your house to where you currently have the pool.
Well.
And I understand that would still put you in the 150, but you're like half, you're half the pool's in it.
Well, it, the, the yard does start to actually take a steep slope to the right-hand side. So I'm not sure, I mean, from, from what we look, and you might speak to that a little bit better.
Yeah, I can, so the area where the pool is right now is very flat. If we do shift it where you're referencing, it does start to slope. So you're looking at just more disturbance and you're going to have to start grading into the slope a bit. Certainly there might, there might be a little less structure in the 150 foot, but the amount of disturbance, I'm, I'm guessing would probably increase a little bit, I think is what we looked at in terms of grading and potential need for retaining walls to create a level area for the pool.
And there are a couple of trees, at least one small tree that would likely have to come up.
Right. You'd want to be set back a certain distance from the driveway naturally.
Yep.
As you mentioned, but so I don't know if you'd pick up a tremendous amount of area there or less disturbance.
Looking at it graphically, it looks like half the pool's in there, but square footage wise, it's, it's.
You don't think I suppose in there?
Yeah, but as a square, as a, as a square footage calculation, it's still not a very large encroachment. And if, you know, you move it a little bit, this is just a little bit less, isn't it? But it's, it's not like, you know, we're talking about thousands of square feet.
I mean, I'm looking at anything as better than not giving a pool. That's just me.
Well, and, and, you know, quite frankly, again, I, you know, looking through permits that have been issued in, in this non-disturbance, I understand that in, I think, 2021 or 2022, a similarly situated pool that was much closer to the lake was granted a variance to be built within the 100 feet zone, I believe. And so, you know, with similar precautions in place. And so again, that, you know, all, these were all considerations we made when we kind of made the decision to move, to move forward with this. I am not.
Part of that, so I think I was here, part of that decision was based on the knowledge that they would be going to conservation.
Right.
And they would have a lot of controls put on them. In this case, since you're not going to conservation, where are the controls? So we kind of have to dig down a little bit deeper.
So I can, to your point, you know, when we, I deal with conservation a lot and so we, these are measures that we take. Frankly, it's more than what we typically do for a pool in the buffer zone in North Andover. A lot of these things are extra and the peer review is not something that Concom does either. So I really do feel that it, whatever's proposed as part of the upper maintenance plan is above and beyond what typically would be there.
Is there a way to change the grade so that it's definitely sloping down towards the pool? Is that bad for pool maintenance instead of sloping away towards wetlands or is that? Again, I know very little about pool maintenance.
I'm not sh- I'm not sure I'm following.
So you said that it's like directly behind, it's a very slight slope up, like a two-foot slope up. And then, but towards the driveway side, it slopes down towards the wetlands, right?
No, it's, it doesn't. No, no, no. The wetlands are behind, behind where the pool is. So they kind of wrap around.
Right.
But where the, on, if you're looking at the house, the right side of the pool is not wetlands at all. And so where the runoff is, the slope is directed towards where there is no wetlands.
So, because it looks like the wetlands come all the way up the right side of your property. Is that, okay. That is where the wetlands are?
Yes, yeah, they're.
But it slopes more so to the right, towards the right.
Right. I'm wondering if we could mitigate even that slope by like, you know, having some sort of barrier or berming on the right side of the pool so that it's not even sloped towards that side.
It's, it's.
Or would that be detrimental?
I think that's where you want it to go.
It's just such a big hill from a civil engineering perspective. The water.
I don't mean the entire property.
You don't want, yeah, I know what you mean. You don't want stormwater. Generally it would be a bad idea to have stormwater flowing.
Like a berm with some trees in it, like a small mound, because it, you know, just so that you don't get continuous runoff towards that.
So maybe I'm, maybe I'm not understanding what you're saying because when, when, if you were standing in my driveway, we're talking about putting the pool, the house is to the left, the pool would go behind it.
Right.
To the right, there is another hill, but the, there, there is no water, no wetlands right there. It is back into the right.
Right. So I mean, wetlands doesn't always where there's standing.
No, it, no, I under, yeah, yeah.
So I'm just looking at the map.
No, I understand.
Which is where it's called wetlands, even if there's not water. So that's the area that I'm trying to see if there's a way to.
So you're saying you're, you're concerned about the stormwater flow from the pool area towards, towards the wetland?
Right.
Is there a way to help mitigate?
Is there a way to kind of like, you know, keep it more contained to the infiltration area where you have the trench, like, you know? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Or, or, am I clear? I, I'm asking if it, if it would help in any way.
Well, I think, you know, with the infiltration, the patio is proposed to pitch directly to the infiltration trench.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and the project kind of preserves all of the natural topography of the site. You know, we're not disturbing any of those slopes. That's part of the benefit of keeping it in the flat area. You know, so I guess it would be very difficult to redirect water from, you know, the kind of the high point up there if, if that's kind of.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, I mean, like, let's say this is your pool. This is your trench, berm of trees. So that if the trench does have an overflow or a ponding situation, it's not just running down the hill even at a slow rate towards the wetland.
Right. But directly behind the pool is that raised bed?
Sorry.
That has?
This way. So if this is your.
Hold the, why do you hold the big plan up so we can point?
Sure.
So, so this is full of vegetation.
Right. So this is the direction that I'm concerned about.
Right.
So some sort of like berm of trees here so that if there's any overflow, it doesn't just keep going that way.
So it's, it still will definitely go that way unless you, even if you dam it, you know, the amount of stormwater that probably comes off the hill will be significant, but it might help, you know, water be absorbed into the, the ground a little faster. But I don't think we're talking about like necessarily slowing it down or.
And that, but there is, there is a, already a walkway and stairs here coming out of the house. So if we were to put trees here, my concern would be in an emergency getting out of this area, I guess I don't like. Because this, this is sort of.
I mean, I don't mean getting rid of the walkway. I just mean like along the, this is the fence, right?
Right.
Like along the outside of the fence.
But this is where the, the gate is? This is where it would be accessed?
You don't access through the, on the walkway?
Well, yeah, but, but like this is, I mean, people, there's already a gate, there's already a fence here.
Right.
And a gate here.
On the walkway or on the proposed construction access?
No, on the, there's already a small, this is, this is pre-existing.
So then.
There's a gate that's already here.
Right.
And there's external stairs here.
Yeah, I'm not meaning to get rid of any of this. I'm saying like on the outside of the fence here when you're done with the construction access and, you know, so that you're not, because if an infiltration trench slows down water enough for it to actually get into the ground, berm also does the same thing in theory with even larger amounts of water because it can spread out back towards the.
But I mean, I guess my concern is that this is, again, this is already all lawn and there's a place structured here. So if we start to put stuff here, I just don't know if that's just going to be more of a.
Laura, this, this area, the direction you're talking about is about 200 feet away from the wetland. I mean, it's well outside what conservation requires and it's even outside, in this 150 foot zone.
But she's talking about how she already has water in front of her driveway. So are we not going to make this worse?
No, 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 no. I'm saying when it go, I mean, after, it's not standing water. I'm just saying after a storm, there's areas where like over, over here, this is the direction the water flows naturally. It already goes to this sort of.
Right. I mean, I think that's exactly what I'm trying to.
It's not, it's not that there's, there's never been standing water anywhere in this, in this yard.
It's, it's, I mean, it is about the flow of water towards that area, which is the only place where it's leaving on a surface water level. It's only place where it would be leaving the pool area and going towards the wetland is on the right side.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I guess I would say, you know, you don't, you're not going to be able to redirect it away from the wetlands on the property because the wetlands are.
I mean, slowing it down so that like less of the water coming, you know, in, in the event of like an overflow or trench failure. Because like, it's also not going to be a new pool forever. It will also be an older pool having, you know, maybe other maintenance issues that we haven't even.
And this is all, all vegetation. Like this is all trees, I mean, full grown trees in this area here.
Hmm. Along the side of the driveway?
Yeah. There's like a hill, a little hill, and then it's, and then it's trees.
I mean, I suppose you could, you could do some shrubs along there, you know, that are a mix between landscape shrubs and water-loving shrubs. That may help. I, I would be cautious about slowing down stormwater causing issues with the dwelling so close and driveway so close. I'm not sure there'd be a lot, a ton of benefit, but if you, you know, feel strongly about that.
I mean, I know, that's why I was asking the question. So, you know, I mean, I'm saying like, if the infiltration trench seems like a good idea, why, you know, slowing water down in other ways might also be a good idea.
Well, I mean, you can always go belts and suspenders and then keep on going and why not do the next step? But I think the infiltration trench accomplishes the main gist of what they're trying to do.
Except for the requirements in terms of if there's a storm, I mean, if she goes away on vacation and I'm not knocking you for going.
Remember, this has been reviewed, peer reviewed by other consultants for the town and.
I understand that, but.
And they're, they're meat in the comments.
We're in the town. Like we're the people.
Right.
Having a conversation about it doesn't hurt, Frank.
And this is our drinking water. So I don't know.
But it also, have you looked at, I mean, where we are in relation to the lake? I mean, there's, we're not, you know, we're not a stone's throw, so.
No, and I, and I understand that. And that might end up being, you know, what makes the discussion go one way versus another. But I am looking at this and I'm going, okay, the requirements, if there's a storm, you know, if we have any kind of a storm, if she's on vacation, I kind of then sit here and go, what is, what is the backup plan if she is away? I mean, we're not hiring a company if she's on vacation going, I saw on the news, there was a storm in North Andover, can you go check?
No.
These are minimal, these are minimal risks.
So. But when you look at the rain we've had, I think Laura's just looking at what is a backup plan if the technology that they've put in place kind of fails or doesn't do the job.
Because two out of the last three years have been record rainfall and the only one that wasn't was extreme drought. So like.
But it's still, it's, it's still take a couple of those storms we had last year to make a pool overflow. So it's, it, it's not like, you know, even, even one of those big storms that we had last year, you know, on itself isn't making the pool overflow.
Right. I mean, so the infiltration trench is not, is not just about mitigating the pool. It's also about mitigating runoff from the patio.
Well, and I'll, and I'll note, there was a house on South Bradford Street approaching Winter Street on the right-hand side that is closer to the lake and does not have any of these precautions in place. And, and I understand that they may have, it may have been built before these were required. But again, you know, this, I mean, I, I think we've really have done a lot of work here to look at how to manage the safety, how to manage the wetland and manage the watershed. I mean, again, if you look at where we are in comparison to the watershed, I don't even, I mean, we are, you know, we're, we are not that, I mean, we are.
So I think the reason why this is coming into play, being in the watershed is not that you're like so close to the reservoir, but that the wetlands are part of the system that keeps the reservoir healthy. So then keeping the wetlands healthy is that much more important because that's what we all drink from. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm like, I know, I'm just saying.
Then it would have been put into conservation. I think it was put into zoning in order so they could limit lots and limit development more so than environmental safety.
Well, I think we have to.
Because we've seen lots like that where it's affected and limited lot sizes. So, you know, there's a, a lot of it was more geared towards development versus an activity within that zone. Otherwise, conservation would have been the place, if they were looking for the protection more so, than the zo- the zoning, they would have put it in conservation.
Well, zoning is opposite, they had to place protections.
It's also, it can't just be about number of houses and lots, because it does specifically say that they need a special permit for, for any structure, like addition, not just like the primary dwelling on the lot. I don't know, I, I, I was really uncomfortable with the last pool that we said was okay and close to the reservoir. And I was only comfortable with it because they went to conservation, so I'm a little edgier about this one.
Was that on Bonnie Lane?
I don't recall off the top of my head, but could have been, for sure. Yeah.
So I, I think with the pool too, you have a lot of built-in storage, you know, a hundred-year storm is nine inches. I know we've had some pretty big storms, but probably in the four to five, six-inch range. So you do kind of have that storage built into the pool. Obviously, if you had two back-to-back, that's, that's the risk, but having two of those 50, 100-year storms back-to-back, it, it is quite unlikely.
I would imagine that the distance between the water level and the top of the pool, it's a minimum of, I'm going to say it, eight inches at least. And so I, one, yes, we could have eight inches, but, but I'm going to say it could be 12 inches. I mean, that distance between the water and the ledge of the pool is, so I, I encourage you to look at that height in terms of just understanding rain. But also the, the amount of water that's in the pool. I mean, I think those are, you know, you, you, there's a lot of water that's there. But I, I'm, yes, it could happen, but I think you've got, there would be some forewarning that there is going to be an issue with the, with the pool. But that's going to take, yes, it can, it has happened, it can happen, but.
Do you mean an overflow or like a break in the pool that causes like it to leak out into the groundwater?
Well, I'm just, I'm talking, what I'm referring to is.
A raise in the.
If no one's home, we have the storm, the water rises, and I'm saying that it would, in my estimation, I'd swag, I'd say, minimum of eight to 12 inches. Of water would have to accumulate before it would begin to.
Overfalling.
Overflow into other areas. So I, I'm, I'm going to say that I, I'm comfortable with what I see.
I do like the care and attention to detail that was brought to the plan. I mean, that's not, not a question at all.
This is a fourth aligner, right?
Yes.
The O and M plan is also recorded as far as part of the water, the special permit.
Well, I could tell you that would be one of the requirements of my decision. No matter, no matter what. I mean, one problem I will have is that I, I don't see, and again, appreciating this is the forever home. I don't really see that there's anything I can do in terms of who you sell it to, or who your children sell it to, or in all honesty, when your children take it over. I mean, this is.
What is the lifespan of a pool? I have never owned.
I will tell you, I have, I have a house that has a pool, not in North Andover. And the pool was not a very old pool, and the liner got a hole in it.
Right.
And nobody was home for a little bit, and the water level plummeted.
Right. That's why I was wondering, because we were talking about watching the level.
Is your pool gunnied?
It has a liner.
No, it's a liner pool.
It's a liner, okay.
I mean, gunnied pools are ridiculously expensive, I wouldn't even throw out the idea of, we'll go gunnied. Because those, I mean, you might as well.
That's a hardship.
You might as well sell one of your children, because the cost of that is just insane.
Definitely cannot condone human.
Okay, fine, don't sell a child. I want to sell mine all the time. I mean, the O and M would definitely be with the decision, what that.
So when you, I don't know what the acronym.
So when a decision's, when a decision is done and signed, it's recorded onto the property.
Oh, no, operational maintenance, okay.
The operational.
You were using the acronym and I wasn't tracking.
Oh, the operation and maintenance would be a tattoo, basically saying, and again, I, I don't know the consequences of this, but if they're caught not following, something I'm sure happened somewhere, along the lines. From someone in our department.
Maybe if just damages are incurred.
What's that?
Maybe if just in da- if damages are incurred in some way, open to lawsuit or something. I don't know.
Does the board have any other questions?
I have no further questions.
I don't.
Anybody on this end?
No, I'm good with it. I'll look.
Laura, you got any more on your, your shrubs?
No questions, I mean, are, are we talking or are we?
Well, no, I'm, first wanted to see if we had any questions, if they had anything else to add and.
Well, I, just one thing, we were, we were waiting for the peer review response before giving the planning board and, I could talk to Gene, but the planning board and, and you all the final O and M. But there were not substantial changes and I highlighted them tonight, so I just wanted to let you know that you will get copies of that tomorrow.
Is a person in the galley here for this, for our meeting?
Is there anyone that's here for public comment on the 115 Winter Street?
No.
Just making sure.
Did you move?
Oh, I was asking if we did.
Nobody, nobody has moved, nobody has gone any, gone anywhere. How big of a massive difference is the O and M that we have compared to?
So the only, the changes are summarized in the letter I gave you there. It was the decoronation of the water before discharging to the trench. Couple of comments on the, the construction matting, adding the silt fence to the erosion controls. Owner's manual, it is part of the O and M documents, that's included in everything. And maybe there was one other, can't remember, I think that was it though.
All of which we, you know, happily adopted and said, yes, well, let's do that. Again, I'm not arguing. No.
So, are you thinking of conditions? Did we want to ask them about?
Well.
I guess, do you want to bring them up while it's still open?
I, I don't want to close it yet. Laura, what is your thought on, I mean, you're, you're more of our.
Well, I mean, I do think that they have, they've satisfied like expectations for how these things should be done, when they have to be done. I guess the only question that I have is, doesn't have to be done? I mean, I don't know, I feel like, we talked about this last time, we had a pool in front of us, which is that I personally don't think pools are a necessity for anyone. Even if you have someone who is a competitive swimmer, you know, they'll typically have much better practice in an actual competitive swimming pool.
Certainly not the only reason we're.
Yeah.
You know, we're.
Right.
I love my children, I don't love one of them enough to put a pool just for them.
Just for them, yeah.
Just be clear.
We have, we have a lot of things in our lives that aren't necessities, but it's still part of everyday, you know, common life. You know, it doesn't have to be a necessity.
Yeah, I mean, I would not say the majority of people have a pool though. Like, you know, I mean, it's not like, it's not like it's a driveway that you like have to have, you know?
But a lot of people have garages and is that a necessity?
I would say it's more of a necessity than a pool, but again, it's like your personal feeling.
It's all preference.
Yeah.
I mean, if they have a swing set or a trampoline, it's their preference and.
Well, that's not a permanent structure that is subject to our concern.
A vinyl pool is a less permanent structure than a gunnied pool would be. People, people fill in vinyl pools all the time. They don't want it, or if they can't maintain it, or they buy a home with it and they don't want it. And it's much easier to do that with a vinyl sided pool than a gunnied pool.
There's also the fact of necessity or not, you know, and please don't take this wrong way. When the house was bought, the limitation was no.
Yeah.
You know, we, we have had some homeowners, and I understand your situation might have been very different. We've, we've had people come in where it's P and S, and they're coming in because their P and S is conditioned on them getting something further from here.
Right, but tha- but that, that's why zoning allows for variances and.
I mean, we purchased, you know, we've been there four years, we knew, we knew it was a condition, we didn't know for sure it was something we wanted. Quite frankly, I love to swim, I have arthritis and tendonitis, and it's good exercise, and I will use it myself. So it isn't simply, I want to get it for my kids, I mean, my kids are not little anymore, I'm not simply getting it for them to enjoy in their childhood.
If I could get a pool, I would get a pool. I, I appreciate the restrictions our town has from other, other departments. So I, I understand therapeutically, exercise, it is nice to have a pool. Do we really have to have such the size?
I mean.
It's, it's about 342 square feet. If, if half the pool is, is in that zone, it's about 342 square feet. I mean, that's peanuts. What, do you want to change it so that, so it's a 200 square feet? It's not even worth it for that small, it's de minimis.
So I've had, I've had one pool, I grew up with one pool, and then it rose 20 by 40.
Yeah, 18 by 38 is average.
Yeah, it's not huge.
Right.
It's not.
I, I mean, we wanted to find a size that was going to be, quite frankly, safe. I mean, I've taken my kids to smaller pools, and when there's more than five or six kids in a smaller pool, it gets a little hectic and scary. And I wanted to find the size that was going to be a good balance for that if you get more than, you know, seven or eight people in it. So that someone can have eyes on people, you know? I, I mean, we, we were members of a local pool in Bradford, and after one season, I said, I'm done, there were just too many people, too close on top of each other, it didn't feel safe. So I wanted, you know, again, find that balance.
It's not a big fan of water country, you know?
God, no.
Coco Key.
I'm just very curious what those like maintenance and cleaners find in those things, anyway.
Let's not. Kids will want to go there someday. Okay, so what, does the board have any other questions?
I don't think so.
Does the applicant have anything else to add?
No, I just, I do want to say thank you for your time and thank you for your service. I know it's a, it's not an easy feat, and I know you all come into it with the best intentions, so I do appreciate your time and patience.
We don't always make everybody happy.
Well, neither do I.
Yours to it.
I, I can feel, I can relate.
Okay. So our options at this point, unless the board has any conditions they would like to ask the applicant would be willing to do, or any further questions. If none of that is the situation, then we would close, the board would discuss and vote. Or for some reason you'd want to continue, we could continue.
No, I don't.
Okay.
Now run.
I move that we close public discussion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, can I have a, Laura's, okay, Laura?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Steve, sorry, Frank. I'm an aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do I vote on those procedural votes?
If you would, if you would like to vote, Matthew?
Well, I only want to vote if it's meaningful.
No symbolic votes. Yeah, seriously.
Every vote counts. Every vote counts. I always try to include everybody in most of them, I think, because I'm always worried I'm going to lose, leave somebody out, so I always figure it's better to have more than.
I just want to know where I stand, what's associated.
At the highest level.
You know?
Highest level.
No, that's clearly not true.
This seat is open anytime. Okay, board? The meeting, public comment has been closed. So what do you have?
Yeah, so despite my own personal feelings about the pool, all right? Which I swear I'd never get one again, ever. We had a Labrador, I could not keep that dog out of the pool.
That was your first mistake.
And I wasn't going to let him in when he was wet. But he was never going to be dry because he kept jumping in the pool, so that's it, I'm done. But, a couple of things, one is obviously a lot of thought is going into this. I do have, you know, some line along your thinking too, which is, what if, you know, you're out of town? What if you're south to somebody who's a ne'er-do-well? But, you know, we have those same discussions about in-law apartments too. What if they move out, then they rent it to better met college kids? And you can't make decisions based on what ifs like that. I can't.
Okay, but it is.
But, all right. The other thing is, is that, you know, again, I, I don't think this is an egregiously large pool. I think they've done what they can do, and the fact that, you know, conservation doesn't have to weigh in on this, tells me that it's probably going to be okay. I mean, I don't want to make decisions for conservation because I don't have the background to do that, all right? Conservation is making a decision here, saying, we don't have to get involved, right? It's not close enough, I mean, we care about it.
They could change that after this meeting.
So, my comment's there.
Matthew? You are always welcome to comment.
Okay, it's good to know that. You know, I, I always sort of feel two ways about requests like this. I think, you know, on the one hand, I think, and there are always extenuating circumstances when you go to buy a house, and, and certainly in 2020, 2022, there was a lot going on. And you don't always know when you're buying a house, exactly what you want the house to look like, and what features that it shall, should have and so forth. But, but I, all that said, I, I do, you know, I, I do like to consider what someone knew when they bought a house and, and whether they considered what the restrictions might have been. And whether they maybe thought of looking somewhere else. I mean, okay, and that's, that's one side of what I think about. The other is more empathetic, I think. And then has to do with what are the conditions on the ground, what are they doing to mitigate the issues? What are the real concerns and dangers? You know, I, I, it does sound to me like they've thought this through. There are other options, but they're not particularly attractive ones. And I do think the incursion is limited, I think, based on what we've heard. And that the sloping in the lot, that, you know, that the chances of something very negative happening are fairly slight. So, tho- those are my thoughts, depending on what you will.
See, I'm not the only one who goes back and forth.
They're not meaningful, I mean.
Everything is meaningful.
No, it's all meaningful.
You, you never know what you say that can flip another board member.
In part because it's exactly what I would have said, so it's perfect. I mean, they clearly put a lot of thought into this, more than would have been asked if they came forward with just a straight-up proposal for the variance, you know, if we wanted to put more conditions on it. You know, and there does not seem to be a better place on the lot to put the pool, except for maybe the front yard, which was not considered, but that seems crazy, right?
Who doesn't want a sunbath in the front yard?
Yeah, who doesn't want it right out on the road?
Zoning doesn't like you do in the front yard.
Oh, really? No pools in the front yard?
There you go.
Darn zoning.
You can't have one in the front yard.
Gosh darn.
Unless you get a variance.
So, I mean, I do think that if there must be a pool, it does have to be here. And we did do a lot of work to try to mitigate it.
I'm comfortable with everything.
I think I've sort of said my piece during the discussion, I'm okay with it, I think there's little risk. And that's why we allow people to have variances. If something doesn't comply and doesn't cause other, other issues or damages, then we can make exceptions for those.
Okay. Not a fan of the placement, not a fan of the size, but I'm being told by my board that I'm probably overreacting a bit. I can take a hint when I, I might not be right, it does happen.
No.
Only time will tell, who's right on this one, but we'll see.
If next year, there's a Warren article for this to come out, a zoning board into conservation will know. I don't like it, but besides the point. Okay. Only because when Frank goes to read the motion, he has to include the operation and maintenance. This is dated January 31st, 2024. Okay, so.
Can we make it a condition to include the updated version, even though it's not submitted with this application today?
We can, we can, we can say to be amended with the final version.
What we're going to do is we're going to have Frank list the operation and maintenance manual, or plan, that's dated January 31st, 2024. Which can be replaced by an updated version prior to recording. Because I don't think the decis- the, the changes aren't going to be, I mean, it's somewhat kind of comparable to a script nurse error. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to hold it as being a massive thing because the changes aren't really massive. Because the only other option is.
To continue it.
Well, and now you can't continue it.
Oh, because we've closed.
Because we've closed. But I didn't think it was very fair to fold up possibly planning and the applicant for, I mean, this is literally March 18th. I'm, I'm not going to ask people to be swift on less than a 24-hour turnaround on providing documents.
So can I say something like, reference the O and M plan and to be updated with the final version as approved by the planning board?
Is the finalized version going to be at the planning board? Can we not ask questions if they can't respond?
Technically, you're not supposed to ask questions, no. My assumption is going to be.
They told us they were updating it for that, so I think we can.
Okay, so you know what?
In the, in the open discussion, they.
The problem is that they can continue it again from planning, we only have the 20 days.
Okay, so what we're going, what we're going to do is, we're going to do the O and M dated January 31st, 2024.
As amended pursuant to the engineering firm that did the peer review?
Oh, can we just reference the letter?
No, no, because this isn't what's going to be recorded, this, this gets recorded.
As amended to include recommendations by.
The firm there.
Okay. I have to, I have to, no.
I just want to make sure all the words actually work.
Yeah. So, O and M dated January 31st, 2024.
With amendment suggested in.
And any subsequent changes?
No, because then that can be unlimited.
Yeah.
Well, can, can. Can, can. Can, can they?
Are we allowed to?
Issue us an updated O and M that? No, with these, with these conditions?
Our meeting is closed, so they, they can't, technically can't provide additional documents. We are going to make sure that we get a copy of this, since it was presented to the board tonight during the meeting, so it can be part of the file.
Can we read in the amendments, since there's only like two or three of them?
I don't want to force Frank to do that. Frank wants this the most, so all of us. So do O and M, January 31st, 2024, and as amended per the Horsley-Witten Group's March 18th, 2024 recommendations. So I think that will allow the applicant to incorporate the two.
For today?
March 18th. That should allow the applicant to incorporate the two, and provide a final version to be recorded with the decision. If not, I will hear about it later. If this is a copy that Jen can have, let her know. If not, just please get her a copy.
Any other, well, reference the plan. Anything else that would be referenced?
The plan, I don't think.
I mean, I don't think there was much else.
Just make sure you have the two, two pages.
Two pages of what?
The O and M.
Oh.
Two pages.
Consisting of two pages, yeah.
I don't think there's anything else to include.
Yeah, okay. All right, ready?
Shoot.
I make a motion to approve a variance pursuant to the Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-4.19(c)(2(c), Watershed Protection District, for construction of a new permanent structure only after a variance has been granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals in the R1 zoning district and Watershed Protection District. Specifically, the applicant's request of variance in order to install an in-ground swimming pool within the 150-foot non-disturbed zone within the Watershed Protection District.
Sorry, Laura?
I say aye.
Do you want to second it?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Laura?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Frank, Ron.
Did I go on it?
No, I called you Ron.
Well, I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have answered.
And I'm an aye.
Okay.
Okay, so, oh, what'd you do? You didn't include.
I didn't, I didn't read these things.
Oh, no.
Should I read it all over?
I guess so.
Read it all over.
I make a motion to approve a variance pursuant to Town of North Andover zoning bylaws, section 195-4.19(c)(2(c), Watershed Protection District, for construction of a new permanent structure only after a variance has been granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals in the R1 zoning district and Watershed Protection District. Specifically, the applicant's request of variance in order to install an in-ground swimming pool within the 150-foot non-disturbed zone within the Watershed Protection District. And.
To include.
To include the plan by Williams and Sparrages. Sparrages dated January 24th, 2024, and the operation and maintenance plan dated January 31st, 2024, consisting of two pages.
I'm sorry to interrupt. So, I know I referenced during the hearing, but the, the plan was also revised to show silt fence and construction matting at construction entrance. So that is revised as well. That was part of the review done by Horsley-Witten. I'm very sorry.
Like the map.
Okay, hold on. Hold on.
Wouldn't I say the same thing with the plan?
Do, including the January 23rd? I'm going to assume that's January 23rd, 2024?
Including, it says February 23rd.
Sorry, February 23rd.
February 23rd, 2024, letter by Williams and Sparrages.
Ten pages.
Consisting of 10 pages. And.
Horsley-Witten.
As, and as amended.
Yeah, you can do that.
Per the Horsley-Witten Group, March 18th, 2024 recommendations.
There we go. I think that covers us. Seconded by Ron. Laura?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Frank?
Well, after all that, I might change my vote. But I'll say aye.
Now I got, now I got the names right too, Ron.
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Okay, so, you guys are all set?
Yeah, this better be a bull party.
We're all going to drive our car in when it gets, when it gets built. Congratulations, please make sure the updated documents, are these for Jen to keep? Okay, we will make sure those are part of the file. And you guys are all done with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I tried my hardest.
Have a good night. And before the board, I know the board wants to jump to adjourn, trust me, I do too. I want to point out, our calendar this year is a little off for everybody. We had to play meeting tag with other boards. So please make note, our may, meeting in May is May 21st. It is the third week in May. May 14th is town meeting, so if you show up here, you will be the only one in an empty building. Everybody will be at the high school.
I don't know the problem with that, I've done that before.
It was our warm welcome to you, Matthew, it was our warm welcome.
May 21st. Really funny, you know that? It's really not a nice prank.
It was an early April Fools' joke for you.
You should have called every one of us and been like, where are you at?
If he had our number, he would have. August 20th is also an off date. I think that is also the third Tuesday.
August 20?
20th, yes. Ron, this does not apply to you, neither did August apply to you. And November, it is a November 19th date. Always feel free to call Jennifer if you are confused on dates.
So Alexandria, just, so, you're just highlighting it? I mean, this is, this, this is the same dates we were given before, correct?
Correct, except for some of us are a little bit more agey than others, and we don't remember when we're supposed to be here, and that agey was, is, is me.
I just literally wait for the Google invite breaker.
I don't pay attention to them.
It's funny, for last week, I thought that we had a calendar item that was in for a week ago, no. Maybe I just put it in there.
I think the invite was sent out a little over a week ago, but it was for this week.
And other than that, we are done, so if I can have a motion in a second?
Second.
I need a motion first.
Adjourn, I moved to adjourn.
Okay, now I can have a second.
I'll still second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You can vote on, on.
Run that like five times.